So I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education on Monday, January 23rd, 2023, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to comply in the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands on the nation on behalf of the judicial justice court.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to review and approve the agenda. Can I get a motion? Bob, second. Phil, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next, we will go to the approval of the minutes. And I think there are a few minor language changes that people wanted to discuss and potentially make a motion to clean up before we approve it.
So, so I had a few minor changes. On the, they're all in section 6C regarding the Columbus Day calendar. In the second paragraph, summing up the comments made in favor of adding Columbus Day as a holiday. Julie Toll requested I add her comment, so I've added a section four which says, let me just, I just wrote it. So the "and" would go after the third point, and then the fourth point would read, "And since Columbus is a controversial subject and teachers would be mandated to teach it on Columbus Day if in school, we should take it off their plates." If that, it's okay. That would be that change. And then I think we, just technically on the motions, if you go down to the next box, it says, "Mr. Bennett requested," it would be, "Mr. Bennett requested a motion to change the, to approve the amended, requested a motion to approve the amended calendar."
Yeah, I think it would be to approve the amended District 2024, 2025 calendar, which includes Columbus Day as a holiday, and moves the last day of school to January 12th, 2025.
Right, and then you would say, Julie, a missed toll, down below, missed toll moved to approve as requested, seconded by Mr. Hogan.
Yep.
And then, because we got the date wrong.
Yep.
It would be, "Mr. Bennett requested a motion to clarify that the last day of school in the previous motion would be June 12th, 2023."
Yep.
And then, Mr., you could say, "Mr. Martin, Mr. Norton so moved, missed toll, seconded." And then the lawyer in there will be.
I think that's good.
Thank you. We made it as confusing as we could.
Yes.
All of these changes are in the online version, correct?
No.
Okay, so we'll have to, we'll make sure to circle back on those.
I just took notes on there, and Elisa did too, so we.
Okay, great. I'm seeing it on the online. Not the last, not the changes I made, I don't, oh, not the dan, okay.
Not the, not the changes on the motion.
I think the Julie's number four, and then the kind of.
But not the changes on.
Yeah, cleaning up the, that, I think it's, so. Second, or do you need?
Do you need a separate motion for that, Penny, or is it just approving the motion with the, or the minutes with those changes?
Well, I don't know. I don't know. I guess a motion to approve the, I think it would be a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. So Penny, second. Brendan, all in favor?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I'm in favor of this. I would just make a general comment about minutes. Just the way this reads, and it's just a comment going forward. And, you know, we can discuss this tonight or another time, but I think the way it's listed, you know, where there's multiple names listed with a series of comments, it could be a little bit misconstrued. I think, you know, if we want to include more detail, we can say board members in favor, board members opposed, and then the, the video can always serve as the, you know, specific commentary made by each board member.
Okay.
Right, so it's, it's, it just seems like we all said the same thing, and we didn't. There were multiple comments made. So I think it's important just for clarity and for transparency that, you know, we can refer people back to the video for specifics. So I would just be in favor of taking this up a level going forward.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so with Brendan seconded, so vote to approve the minutes with the changes as amended by Penny. All in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to comments from the public to. Oh, sorry, we have workshop minutes. All right, can I get a motion to approve the January 18th, 2023 workshop minutes? Phil, second. Katrina, all in favor? Penny?
I thought I had it up there, sorry.
Okay, it's approved. Next, we'll go to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject, and we would ask any speaker to just give their name and street address when they come to the podium. Any public comments?
Glad I made it. I missed the last three minutes. Okay, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Hannah Chan of Spring Water, and I just have some short comments on the ninth grade social study. So, after College Board terminated AP exam of World History I back in 2018, our school developed and implement current curriculum for ninth grade. This is the fourth year of the new curriculum. Correct me if I'm wrong. We already got some very encouraging result. More students enrolled in AP World History II and more students made higher score, you know, four and five in an AP exam. Due to the last two years of a pandemic, it's due too early to draw the conclusion now, but we do have certain level of confidence that the current curriculum is very promising to prepare our student for the next level of studying. I want to give a big part to Mr. Stevenson, Dr. Planty, and the entire task team. Thanks for your hard work. And, sorry, Dr. Lacy, I missed you here, but we all know, for good or bad, you are always there. Thank you, too. So now, can we do a better job? Of course, we're in New Canaan. We all know that for the past three years and as of now, ninth grade social study is the only core subject in the entire high school. No placement, one size fits all. Sure, we have a rich curriculum, but without a proper arrangement, the burden right now is left on the teachers in the classroom and the students seeking extra guidance and help. I'm sure many of you already heard this kind of feedback multiple times in the past few years, probably mailing from challenged parents. And I'm here tonight to speak for the non-challenged kids. They may be not special enough to make the challenge program from third, fourth grade to the seventh, eighth grade, but they're still talented, and they have their own strengths. More important, they are interested in history, they are interested in social study, and they keep challenging themselves. So, I, I still have time, right? So, when they finish their classroom work ahead, they're looking for some guidance.
Your two minutes are up.
Okay, almost there. Some direction for extra effort, but what they get now is some additional reading material, some extra worksheet randomly handed out by the teachers in the classroom to kill the remaining classroom time. If, sorry, if their teachers happen to be enough.
Thank you.
You know, experienced and.
Your time is up, thank you.
Situation. Sure, all our teachers are trained for multiple tasking, but we want to, and we want to know how childhood left behind, but without a proper arrangement, the widespread of knowledge and the skill level, interest, and different intention on the subject, teachers in the classroom can only do that much. I'm sure everywhere.
I didn't, I didn't, you can also email the board if you don't have enough time.
I'll come back next week if I cannot finish this. Can I, can I come back in the, in the second session of the end session of the open commentary?
Yes, you can speak again at the end for two minutes.
Okay, I'll be back. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Thank you. And we move to the action items for today. So do we need a motion for a second reading?
No, we, we had the, the motion seconded in the first reading, so it remains an open item, so the, we'll just pick it up. Yeah, and as the board is well aware, you know, we had an excellent, I thought, workshop together on Wednesday where we spent another, it's about three and a half hours or so working through the details of the budget and the questions and answers, and, you know, we are here tonight to, to open it up and to continue that work in the hope that the board is ready to, you know, by the end of our conversation, adopt the budget as its own and move it forward to, to the town bodies and later, a little bit later in the week. So we are at your disposal here to help with the process if, if that is, is helpful. Again, I would recommend anyone who wants to learn more about the budget to go right to our website. It's all available right there. The board did have a chance to go through the, the Q and A that we had done together, and, you know, we'll be posting that to the website as well for anybody who's interested in seeing, seeing those questions that were posed. We had planned for Joe Spurgeon to join us, and I think, as you're aware, he, you know, due to a family tragedy, unfortunately, he's unable to join us. But, you know, I feel confident that we have the information in front of us to keep moving forward.
So I did, I would agree. I thought the workshop was very productive on Wednesday, so I thought that was good, and I think a lot of questions got answered and a lot of topics had good discussion. I guess I would open it up for follow-on questions or comments or things that people had on the follow of Wednesday's discussion and some of the written Q and A getting distributed.
I know we were, Joe was gonna come and do a deep, but is, are you gonna go through, wanna start with Internal Services, probably since that's the hardest?
Sure, we can, we can sort of go right in the budget book and go right to the page and sort of, and walk through that a little bit if that's helpful. I believe.
Yeah, you wanna, do we wanna cover specific questions, or?
Yeah, and I just, I guess I'm, I wanna just understand how we got to the number this year better, and I was just a little confused on some of it, so.
Sure, so I guess the, one of the places to start is right on page 93 in your budget book.
Yep.
Which is Joe's projection as he builds up, because obviously, expand in the ISF is the anticipated claims. And so, there are lots, there's lots of modeling behind all of this, but we certainly can, can walk through a little bit to show how we, we get to the number. And as we, just as a starting point, as you know, our plan year does not match up with our budget year. So the plan year begins in September, September 1st, and runs through August 30th. So, you know, when we are doing this work, he's trying to make projections for the next plan year, not the next budget year, so there's, there are, there's two months less of, of actuals that we have to work with. So he keeps updating it for us, and he just did it again recently and landed at a very similar number, so I think we're in pretty good shape there. And, and Sean, certainly feel free to jump in whenever, whatever, okay? So what, essentially looking at this, so in Joe's projection, and I probably won't do it justice, but essentially, he looks through to look at how the plan is functioning so far, and goes back, so the in-force is, you know, is this year as we look at 22, 23. If you go to, going down that, in the top box, right, you see that he's got a projection for the gross claims, removed large claims, which is, what he does when he does the modeling is he removes the, the large claimants because of the impact they have on the plan, and you don't want to trend those forward because they're maxed out at 300,000.
Right.
And so if you trend them forward, you're gonna be compounding on a number that you can't get to. So he pulls all of those out, plus the, the gross of what he anticipates the payback to be, and then he winds up adding them back in a little bit later, and that's why it's called the initial projection plus two add backs. So he adds back in the anticipation that there'll be two that are over. So with all of those adjustments, as he looks down through the projections and looks through the, pulling those folks out, gets to the 12,475. Adjusted claims per member is at 1,596. Go down below. Let's see. That 1,596.19 ties out, if you go down to the third box across the top, the adjusted claim in the 21 months. And so he uses that, and he looks at a per member, per claim per member, and then he goes through the, the trend modeling. And this is where we get to an aggressive, moderate, or conservative trend, right? And we had used conservative for a couple of years when we were rolling into the HSA, it, the High Deductible Plan, because we really didn't know where it was going to land, and we had to do that. So since then, we've moved into the moderate trending around all of it. And so as you look across down that moderate trend column, you get the, over 22 months, and that's part of the challenge when you're losing those two months, because it's two more months of trend that you're adding on, right, without having the actuals. But as you work that number down, getting to the annual trend and the applied trend, we don't use any margin in our planning. A lot, a lot of places do. That's a 1.0, and they'll just build that in as a margin factor. We don't. We try to be as tight as we can. Number of contracts gets you to, let's see, I just need to work my way down. You have the 13.9, and then you have the large claimant adjustment. So he adds back the 15 because he took out five, and then the 600,000 to adjust back out to get to the 14,883, which I believe is our number going in, is the 14,883, right?
That is the claim number, gross claims assumed. Correct.
Out of curiosity, the large claim add-back assumption, so for like in-force, it was 900, but now we're looking at 1.5 across all three scenarios?
So it's just five people, right?
Right, so we, we had five that we backed out, I believe?
I think there were three.
Yeah.
We use, we assumed five claims over 300, and then we have a further assumption that we add back two, so we have a net of three claims over 300,000.
Okay, so the top is, is two. We may have asked him to adjust that to three, and it didn't change the heading.
Yeah.
I think that's what happened.
Yeah, no, that was based on current experience. I mean, that, that's a assumption being made based on current trends.
Correct.
And knowledge.
Right, because of what we currently have and what we know, I mean, those are generally known folks that sometimes it's by, it's a, it's procedure, but often it's also prescription. So there's a few things that are known. We don't know the people, but we know the, the claims.
So just to, I understand, so if I look at the, the footnote that starred for large claimant adjustment, those are situations where we think we know claimants that are coming off, right? And then the line above for large claim add-back is based on what we, we have some actual knowledge that we think that number's gonna be five for this period?
That's right.
Okay.
Right, and then, just continuing down that column, the, the stop-loss number, where that anticipates about a 50% increase year to year because of what our history over the last couple of years. I know, Joe, we've been talking a lot about that 50% number, because it's a lot of, a lot of money when you're talking about, you know, 700,000 or so. So he, if things improve over the course of this year, that number may be lower, but given where we are, to try to, to be sure that we budget for what we need. So the stop-loss premium doesn't get priced out until May, so it's very, it's challenging to budget for it, but we can keep an eye on our trending and where we are, and if that can be modeled downward a little bit, we can. The 50% number comes from the maximum they're permitted to increase our policy year to year. So that would be if we stayed with the people that we're with and, and got the best deal. That is what happened this year. It did go up the 50% because of our last couple of years' experience with them, because we've been getting back a lot, quite a bit more than we've been paying in.
So it's a worst-case scenario, the 2.171. As Brian mentioned, that we will not know until May-June timeframe when we, we're gonna go out to bid with the town, and so by May-June timeframe, we'll have a better idea as to whether Voya will bid or other companies will bid. So it's, it's a matter of where we end up. There could be another vendor that might be interested in taking us on. So maybe we can save some money, but we won't know until May or June.
Does the current vendor have to bid?
Doesn't.
They don't. So 50%, it could be worse, right, if you end up with another vendor?
Could be.
But, Paul?
I'm not sure. I think the policy that we have now guarantees that we could lock them in again next year at a 50%.
Oh, we can, okay.
I think so. If we go out to bid, I don't know if that invalidates that or not.
Gotcha, okay.
We've got to check.
All right, so.
We would be covered at a maximum, we know, we could get the policy from them at a 50% cost maximum, and he said.
Okay.
We're not in danger of not having it.
Got it.
Yep.
Well, I was just thinking, you're in danger of just the market at that.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah, and our trends aren't great. You know, we have, we've pulled in over $2 million the last couple of years on this policy, and paid less than, significantly less than that. But, you know, if things improve, we'll see.
When somebody retires and they're on this, do they come off then?
No, they're, when they retire, they have the ability, the ability to stay in the policy if they want to. So if somebody retires from this, from the schools, they can stay in, in the same plan that they retired from.
Okay.
Until they're eligible. Actually, they can stay in almost as long as they want by, by statute, and if they're in, it's the same rules, same $300,000 max.
Right, right, okay.
When somebody comes off, they may be shifting over to like a disability Medicare kind of thing.
Right.
Or other reasons, yeah.
Dan, I was gonna add just, just another note. Usually right around when we meet with town council in April, we have a reforecast from Joe of the claims, so we, you know, we either, we can adjust, we'll adjust our number up or down and communicate that to the town. We've done that in the past, so that would be another checkpoint before the budget's finalized.
That's right.
He uses the hurricane model example. Closer you get, the more accurate it is. But so it all, yeah, so that, that page, 93, sort of is what rolls up into page 92, where we're talking about the anticipated expenditures, right, which drives our revenues. And you talk about that claims number, 14,883, 474, is that first number across expenditures, and then as you're going down, you see that our prescription subsidy is anticipated in there, and the deposit of the HSA remains pretty, remains stable. That's in negotiations. We, we pay 50% of the deductible, and that's been consistent from the start. And you see the other, other costs that roll up to the 18.4 million dollars below. And then you see the budget up above for the, the revenues. And this does anticipate using about that $300,000 of fund balance from the ISF in order to, to meet the budget number. Which is, I just wanna make sure I have the right page. I guess the, the other thing about, again, the budget request and the ISF and all those things, what's, what's in the ISF is your IBNR, which is anticipated funding required for claims that are incurred but not recorded in that budget year, so there's usually a month or two of that, and that's, that's the 1.5 million dollars there. And then there's the, of course, the 40% of the corridor. That 88% overall, that is that initial chunk of the reserve, because on top of, as you know, on top of the $300,000 individual stop-loss that we have, we also have an aggregate stop-loss that is 20% over fully anticipated claims, whereas if the total cost of the plan goes above that 120%, it is covered by the aggregate stop-loss number. The cost of that stop-loss is less, significantly less than the cost of the individual stop-loss, because it's, it would be rare to be 20% over in that charge, but we do have it as a risk mitigation strategy as well.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the IBNR, because I, I believe in the past, recently, there's been some confusion around this and what could be perceived to be we're pre-funding the next year versus what is IBNR?
Sure. So yeah, IBNR are those, the charges that are incurred in the plan year but not recorded or billed to the policy until we're in the new plan year. And so you have to carry, you have to have assets in the account to fund your liabilities, your charges and expenses that are out there. So IBNR, essentially, if we were to decide to close the plan and go to the state plan, for instance, you would have to have the IBNR in your account in order to. you would have to have the IBNR in your account in order to pay off the rest, those bills that you may not be getting until two, three, four months later. But you have to have the full funding in the account to pay for all of the, the bills that were incurred while you ran the account. So if we were to shift to a different policy or a different plan, no longer go self-funded. The IBNR is sort of, is what would pay out the tail of those, those bills that come through. And that is different. You, you are expected to, to carry that when you have a self, self-insured plan. And that's part of the audit every year. It's part of the, the auditors talking to us about it and telling us that it's the, it's the appropriate way to account for a self-funded plan. And so it does some, it does trend up a little bit, very marginally. But if the plan, as the plan expenses, the anticipated claims go up, then your IBNR would go up a little bit because of the, you know, the need to cover those charges over those periods, that period of time. So whatever trend is, generally, it works on that number too.
The IBNR, the, these claims, they, the vast majority of the claims will emerge in the first six months, but we have to, the insurance company has up to 24 months to fully, you know, submit those claims. 24 months.
So I just wanted to clarify that, I mean, we do our best on this to update the town bodies as we go through the approval process. So when we're in front of the Board of Finance, if for some reason our claims experience gets worse, the Board of Finance, we can increase it or decrease it if our experience is better. By the time the Board of Finance has approved it and we get to the town council, the town council does not have the authority to increase our budget.
That's right.
They can only decrease it. So we would have to go through some more difficult approval process if our numbers significantly worsened between what happened at the Board of Finance and the town council, since the town council couldn't increase numbers for us.
That's right.
That's, that hasn't happened. Usually we're, we're somewhat conservative and, and actual experience has, has proven beneficial, but you, you never know.
Which is why we do have Joe monthly run the numbers for us, right? And we, we're heartened when we see the numbers stay consistent, which it has for the couple of projections that he's run so far. The numbers stay the same, so that's a good sign. But we'll keep doing that, right? So he'll do a month at a time, as he has been. And if there are significant changes, as you're saying, Penny, we'll, we'll communicate those right away.
I mean, just one other thing I'd mention is you can see that the, the fund balances at the end of '21 and '22 were in excess of what our expectations were and what the policy was. And that was really just due to COVID, so that hasn't really happened since then. But that was a, that was an anomaly. So we're, you know, we're budgeting to essentially our, our policy and not a dollar over, which is the 1.2 million dollars left over, which is a pretty small number when you think about, you know, the claims that come in month to month. It's, you know, one and a half to $2 million depending upon the month. So we're, you know, budgeting to have enough, but not more than we really need to, to run this insurance fund.
Yeah, I think one of the big takeaways is the reason to have a self-insured plan is the anticipation that more years than not, you're going to come out ahead and have that fund balance to reinvest and to try to keep your costs down. So that's, and you're right, in COVID, it just accelerated that significantly. At the, and through the years, the plan has run well. And we've made changes in our collective bargaining agreements that, in partnership with all, all of our employees, to move over to the high deductible plan and to structure it in such a way. That's helped us keep costs down. And as, as we keep costs down, it benefits us certainly, and it also benefits the employees because their, their premiums are a little bit less as well, because those are based on our costs. So it's a mutually beneficial thing. But the, if you weren't coming out ahead more years than you were losing in a self-insured plan, then you wouldn't be self-insured. Right? So that's, that's why a lot of districts have chosen to do it this way. Because the, generally, the savings from one year are available to roll into the future in order to try to keep those costs. And there are some years that it costs you more, right? And you don't win every year. But as long as you win more than you lose, you keep doing it.
So on, on this, I guess, just to understand, so we were, we talked about, and I know it's one of the drivers of the year-to-year drivers, the 1.3 million. So that I see here in the difference to reserve policy. And so basically, that was just that the, the budget, the, where the budget ended up was actually 1.3 million lower than where we originally targeted.
Yeah, that was the 1.3 million that they took out of the budget and, and put into the special appropriation. So it's not in our budget. It was funded.
So that, that's the thing I'm trying to make sure that, like, at least I or maybe others understand. So it was not in the budget, which makes it look like a driver year to year when you're comparing projected from '23 versus proposed '24 budget. But it actually was funded from a transfer to get the balance back to the level it needed to be.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why in this, on this page, the '23 projected to 20, 24 proposed isn't that much different because it was actually funded in the projection. Projection includes the funding. But when you look at the overall budget, you know, our 2023 budget compared to the, this proposed 24 budget, there's that $1.3 billion delta. So it's, again, it makes it impossible, not impossible, but difficult to compare year to year, which is why we shouldn't do it this way going forward.
Right.
Or I should say the Board of Finance shouldn't.
So if you look at, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe below on the balance sheet, if you look at the cash and equivalents, you see the 5.8, the 3.6, and then just the drop to the 1.8 on the budget. And then it goes to the 3024 in the projected. I believe that's where the 1.3 is accounted for. So on the, it's on the balance sheet because it is in the ISF, but it's not in the budget because it wasn't in the budget.
So that number would be 1.3 lower if we hadn't made the transfers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
And just, I mean, just to like run that through, the projected, we would be, see the fund balance, 630, the 1, 507, 110 in 2023 projected. That would be $207,000. And that would be below our reserve policy by like a million dollars. Which is.
Yeah, essentially, the 1.3, the transfers of 1.3 was needed to fully fund
Right.
the IBNR and the corridor.
That's right.
Well, was the, fully funded, but then we needed another 316,432?
And, and to fund the deficit that we had.
Okay.
About 200 and something.
Which was claims, right?
Yeah, claims.
So just so I understand, with the 1.3, if we, that had not been taken out, then the 2023 budget, instead of set at the very top line where it says Board of Ed operating budget contributions, that would have been $1.3 million higher. So, which would have.
Yes.
Which is the reason why it looks like we're having a huge jump from 2023 to 2024 with our Board of Ed contribution because we're going from 13, 38 to 15, 19. But that actually, the 13, 38 should have been $1.3 million higher. So it's not really a big change. We're still having good fund experience.
Yeah, and, I mean, if you go way back and you look at '21 to '22, there's a $4 million delta, which is just due to COVID. Right? We had an extra $4 million. So, I mean, the number for 2022 with that would have been, what is that? Roughly 13 million, 2022, instead of 8, 9. So there's a lot of, with COVID and then this 1.3 million, there's a lot of movement in the numbers.
If you go back pre-COVID and trend up each year, you're below the trend of the market first.
Yeah, it's like sub 3%, yeah. Right?
But that's, that's a very good point, Penny, only that, you know, the budget request that the Board of Ed brought to the town was 1.3 higher in that top, in the top line, right? So it would have been more like a 14.6 or 0.7. And then that trend up to the 15.2.
Actually, I forgot the, we had, we had a special appropriation in '21 and '22 also, so.
We did.
Yeah, that number in '22 would have been more like 14, 5, something like that.
Yep. And the plan has run well, right? And that's, again, the whole reason to have a self-insured plan is to run well and to be able to reinvest and keep costs down, which is what we've been able to do through the years. We're anticipating, as we've mentioned before, you know, we're probably, we've pulled a lot of the levers that are available to be pulled in negotiations, you know, as we've looked at designing the plan from our, you know, the, the high deductible plan and where the, what the deductible looks like as far as the maximum and the per person maximum and all those things. We still are one of the only school districts that I'm aware of, certainly a state, that, that has a co-pay after the deductibles hit for a period of time, which saves us quite a bit of money in our plan and the overall projections and, and costs. So we've done a lot of those things. Now we're thinking we're probably going to move on trend, maybe more than we had, say, five years ago when we, you know, where those, those changes were rippling through the system a little bit and we, you know, had the benefits of those. So we, you know, we are comfortable with a moderate trend. We think, you know, it's probably going to be close to where it is. We would be, I'd be concerned about moving to a more aggressive trend in this modeling. And it's not that much of a difference, but it is, right? It's still, you know, the, the numbers, when you're look, talking about an account that has, you know, 15, 18 million dollars and, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars can make a big difference, so.
If you look on the expenditure line though, it's, it's not, only the drivers really are, I think the stop loss, right? 700K.
Yep.
What's driving the RX subsidy? It's been dropping over, over time. Like from '21 to now, it's, proposes like 130K less. What drives that, do we know?
I'm looking to Sean to see if it came up, yeah. Yeah, I'd have to, to dig into it a little bit to know.
I don't, I don't have the answer.
I, I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but I think Joe said that was an area of focus and they were just negotiating rebates and things better than they had in the past.
Okay.
But that's just recollection.
It, it looks like what's, might be skewing that, actually look a little bit more stable at the total expenditure line. And like, is the stop loss premium netted out versus the stop loss reimbursement?
Right.
Right? Because I think what you're saying was, you know, we paid seven, like in '21, we paid $728,000 in premiums and we ended up getting over 1.3 million in reimbursements. And then paid a little bit more premium next year, or, or a lot, I guess, 992. But we really got significant reimbursement, over 3 million bucks.
Exactly.
Which is why I think they're, they've, the premium continues to go up to try and deal with situations where they could be covering 1.3 to 3.1 million. So I guess the question is, for the '23 budget where, you know, it was almost a $500,000 premium increase, we thought we were not going to get any individual stop loss reimbursement there?
Well, again, when we budget, we back out the total amount, the gross amount for each of our high-dollar claimants that get that reimbursement. And then we only add them back in at 300,000 each. So they're only in the plan at the 300,000. So we don't project the full cost of their claim.
Okay.
Right? So if, if somebody costs us a million dollars, we pull the million dollars out, do the model, and then add them back as 300,000. So you're assuming a zero going in because you haven't put the, the delta between the 300,000 and whatever the anticipated max of the claim is.
Got it.
And then, yeah.
Any questions? So on this, it seems like we can discuss more amongst this group if we want to. Or the question really comes is if we take this to the Board of Finance and Town Council, do they want to look at these assumptions or, or fully fund it to the, to, to our policy? Which is what we're requesting.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
And again, as, you know, we've said before, when we build the model, we work with Joe and pull all this together, our goal is always at the end of the budget year, as we build all this, to be at zero. So we've exactly funded what we need for our claims based in, with our revenues and all the other expenses are a part of it. We have the money in there for the IBNR. We have exactly the 40% of the 20% that we need, and that's it. That's what, we don't build in any margin. We don't push money forward. You know, if there's a dollar above that, that's available in the fund, we turn it back and use it to bring down the anticipated, the cost for the next year. So we turn it back to the taxpayers quickly as we can. And I know there are some self-run plans and some folks that try to smooth that out. So if they save, if they save $100, they'll do $50 in the first year and $50 in the next to make it smoother over time. We've never used that approach because we think if the money's in, if there's $100 today in the account, let's give it back today to the taxpayers quickly as we can, instead of carrying it for, you know, half of it for a year longer than we need to. It leads to some maybe more movement in the number at the end of the day. But we've always felt that that was the right thing to do. Because if the money is in there, then we shouldn't keep it in the account. We should turn it back, you know, as quickly as we can. So this modeling and what you have in front of you, although, you know, we don't have the money this year to, to do much with, but that's what we're building towards, try to be at zero at the end of the budget year so that we've exactly, you know, hit the numbers across the board.
Okay.
I know we talked about classroom coach in the workshop. I have a few more questions.
Sure.
So question number 64. Response says, "Some new teachers in the profession have not had as many opportunities for in-person fieldwork, student teaching, given the pandemic and remote learning. This coaching position can support their development of classroom management skills in the first years of their time in the profession." So are we looking at this coach as just a, like a temporary solution to get through these next few years with teachers that haven't had in-room class experience because of the pandemic?
I think that's part of the reason why we feel it's an important initiative and that it's something that we'll have to monitor and see. You know, we definitely, that increases, I think, the, the importance of it. As we watch over time, if it's, it's one of those jobs that you hope that they're sort of working to not need the job anymore, right? As they're building capacity and doing this work. So I think we monitor it and we watch it closely for its effectiveness and, and make a decision, you know, over time. We may find that there are other, you know, everyone's on a continuum in our practice, right? So we may find that there's some very strong teachers who are getting even stronger as a result of this work that they're doing, at least having the time to talk to somebody else or what have you, in which case I think we'd have to evaluate it on those merits.
So how do you differentiate that? Being that they haven't really had classroom experience, I'm assuming that they'll get stronger as they get that in-classroom experience. So how, how do you differentiate that from, from the coach and their success?
Well, the coaching model that we use is a gradual release kind of model, right? That they, it starts with collaborative planning. It works through the TAPL document, as Dr. Crenchie was talking about, around, you know, domain one and classroom management and what have you. The, I think, part of that is through the feedback that you're going to get from the person doing the work and from those receiving the coaching, right? But there certainly is also environmental changes that we'd be looking for that would speak to success or not in each, in those classrooms. Part of, part of it would be to understand how that person is using his or her time, right? How much of it is with, with teachers in the classroom? How much is it modeling? How much with planning? How much with students? How much with, with other meetings? And so, you know, that, sort of the evaluation criteria, it would follow in a lot of ways, a lot of what we do currently with coaches that we have. But this is a new position, right? So we want to make sure that we are also aware of and capturing the, the data, the information that we need to make an informed decision. You know, it is a new position in that we didn't, can't look externally and say, okay, that's, we're going to replicate that in, for us. Because our need. Because our needs are a little bit different, and I think that this is something that's, it's not, not a common thing, right? We're looking to try something new based on the feedback that we've received from our, our principals and teachers, what have you. So, you know, evaluating its effectiveness is something that we'll have to work with our principals about and, and making sure that we are capturing and evaluating the information that'll best inform that decision going forward, right? It may be, it could be everything from a short-term thing for a year or two while we work through some of the disruption that we're experiencing and the challenges that kids are having, as you know, these days in, in classes. But, or we may find that this is adding value that we didn't anticipate, and it's worth considering, continuing or expanding. And that's what, I think, as we consider it as a pilot, that's part of what we, we evaluate going into the pilot.
Okay. And just curious, how many BCBA's do we have in district?
Two.
I, I have a follow-up question on that, because I actually thought the discussion on Wednesday was, was helpful, definitely. I thought it gave a more encompassing view of, like, what, what we can gain from this. As I thought a little bit more about it, I guess, how, how much of this is, like, because some of these things, like, the things that the coach seems to be able to be targeting, like, executive functioning and time management and classroom setup, like, that's not behavior-driven? So I'm trying to understand how much of this is behavior-driven versus some of those other things, which are all laudable and would be good, versus, like, oh, we, you know, we have a more acute potential behavior issue that's changed over time and maybe it's a result of some of the COVID impact, maybe it's, was always trending that way. I'm just kind of curious, the, the mix, but also, like, where the behavior trend line is going or has gone.
So those often, and certainly Dr. Crenchie, others, feel free to jump in, but those often are the, they precipitate behavioral challenges with kids. So the idea around executive functioning, classroom management, classroom structure, transitions, when students are transitioning from one, one period, one activity to another, things like that. The, those can sometimes be, if they're not managed well or, you know, if there's other challenges that exist, that exist within there, they can lead to challenging student behavior. So that's where it's sort of, that's where it's included in there. The, you know, as a district, we are learning more and more about the, the idea that when students are challenged and behavior's challenging, it's because they don't have the skills required to success, successfully navigate whatever's in front of them, whatever challenges that they're, they're facing. And so there, you know, it leads to some dysregulation for students. And so it's this, it's the Stuart Ablon statement around skill, not will, right? When students aren't doing what we would hope that they would do or expect them to do. So part of that is, it triggers us to reflect on, are we teaching students the skills that they need in order to be successful in the environment? But it's also for us to think about, are we setting up the environment to maximize the chances of students' success and then having the skills? Is it age-appropriate? Are we, you know, there's a lot, different, lots of different layers to it. And if I'm missing anything, you're welcome to jump in. Okay.
Is two BCBA's enough in district?
For our current needs, I think it is enough. But usually what we wind up doing is, BCBA's are reserved for the most challenging behavior. Prior to that, we work with social workers or psychologists to develop behavior plans and do FBAs and BIPs, Behavior Intervention Plans. The BCBA's work with our, our most complex behavioral situations.
And is, is one for older students, one for younger, or do they both work with age?
There are split between the schools, the, most of the BCBA work takes place at the elementary level. And there are, you know, there's some, one covers the high school and elementary, a couple of elementary schools, and the other is the, the SACS and elementary schools. So we divide it up.
So I've been spending time with, you know, new teachers of the district, as you know, meeting with them for breakfast in the morning, what have you. One of the most frequent requests that I'm hearing from them is a cheat sheet on acronyms. So Bill, could you just say for a moment what a BCBA is and maybe a little bit about what, what the role is?
It's a board-certified behavior analyst. And it's a relatively new profession for schools. It came around in full force when we had an increase in the autism rate identification. Much of BCBA's time is spent with students on the spectrum. And they, they do an FBA, which is a functional behavioral assessment, which takes ten, twelve, fifteen hours to do, where they observe a student in different situations. They determine what, they identify what their concerning behavior is, what are the antecedents that lead up to that behavior, and they try and work with the student and the, and the faculty to, to develop a behavior intervention plan that will either replace a, a behavior that is not desired with one that is more desirable or extinguish a behavior or, to have a behavior go away over time. That helps clarify.
Anything else on classroom?
Some questions on the IT plan? Probably, one thing that was confusing, all the five-year cycles start in twenty twenty-four on that appendus C for the one-to-one equipment, which ideally, right, you'd want to have gear kind of roll off every year and other gear come on every year and not have spikes. So I'm trying to understand, like, it doesn't really identify, kind of like, how much, how much of the gear at each year is going to be aging out? And sometimes to smooth stuff out, you can just buy an extra year of, of warranty to, to maybe fit the curve better. This just looks like there's spikes, like, if there's a hundred and fifty K spike, you know, for grade two in twenty-six, does that mean I don't see it again till thirty-one? Like, how does this, it's not?
Well, if, I think how I, how I'm reading it is, so the ten thousand, those are replacement devices at each of the levels.
Okay.
Right? Those, that's, that's not the new cycle, but if you go down to the eighth grade, you see the hundred forty thousand. So that is the, the life cycle, the eighth-grade devices are being refreshed.
Okay.
Right. And then if you go up to the seventh grade, a hundred two thousand dollars in twenty-five, and ninety-two and twenty-six for sixth, fifth, fourth. So I think, I read it that way as the.
Those are the, that's the refreshing of the grade?
Right? So my assumption would be that, you know, five, four, three, two, one, years back was the main purchase. One of our challenges is, you know, we had purchased the devices that were in carts, and then we'd rolled to the one-to-one when we went into the pandemic, and many of them were the same age. Because we'd purchased them as carts in, in those classrooms. So we've really worked to kind of shift them around to try to have same devices at the grade levels and same ages, but it's not a perfect science. The same with the, so the second grade iPad with keyboard, if you look across in twenty-six, that's a one fifty. So then, and the iPads you can get a little bit more time out of because they do last a little bit longer. Chromebooks aren't really made to last. You might, you get, if you're lucky, you'll get four, four good years out of them, but they don't, they sort of, they start to fall apart, I think. They're just not built, you know, they're pretty inexpensive devices.
Oh, I know, I know.
Three, three to four hundred bucks. But I, that's, I think that's what he's trying to mitigate, and I do know there's been some, some loss and damage, which is the ten thousand dollars in each of the, the grades that aren't getting the full refresh.
Right.
He may have to shuffle that around based on what the actuals are, but I think he's just looking to, to build that in. And again, Jill, I know you're, you're always working with your curricular team around this, and Sean, I know you and Ian are working closely too, but.
Right, so some of the ten thousand dollars also is in regards to enrollment shifts that also occur. So you could have a bubble of a group of kids that are going through, so you have to purchase that. I also want to think, I, going back in time, and of course, like, if I look at those seventh-grade iPads, those were purchased in twenty twenty. So that was when we were rolling out the devices for when they were coming back. In the fall, we had to have the iPads. So if you look at it, it's a, it's about a six years that we're hoping to get out of that. So, you know, anywhere, the iPads tend to last a little bit longer, as long as we can keep renewing those iOS systems. And Brian's right, it's the Chromebooks that go a little bit faster, they're not meant to last a long period of time. And they hit a certain operating system, and then you, you just really can't use them anymore. And so this past year, we ran into replacing those eighth-grade flip Chromebooks because that's what they use mathematically. And so those have been very successful for them, so that's where they purchased those flip Chromebooks. But, so I think we tried to create this five-year plan last year when we realized that we had so many devices that were going to come offline at once. And some of the Chromebooks that we had over at SACS that were sitting in carts were actually purchased by PTC. So that's how old some of those Chromebooks were, that we had to then distribute out into students' hands. And then it was trying to make it so that we had to shift devices, so we, we moved so fast to get them into the students' hands, and then you had to shift to say, okay, so instead of saying, we're going to shift these two teams in seventh grade, we tried to get all the same devices all the same year into seventh grade. So then it just became a recycle for seventh grade and then a recycle for fifth grade, a recycle for fourth. And so this is kind of how we mapped it out over time.
Okay. I, I guess then, on the other more, I get it on the, the one-to-one gear, because I know Chromebooks don't last, but like on, it seems like there's some bubbles coming through on, like, I know switching, I think they, I think Ian said last week, I forget what it was, there was like ninety-something switches and like sixty-eight of them, like, a pretty high percentage of them were coming all at the same time. So all I would say is, you know, there, there is strategies, you can, you can buy extra time on them if they're not giving you, you know, you can buy, you know, next day replacement on them and extend that out so that you can smooth out the bubbles, but.
If something like a switch that's just passing traffic along.
Yeah, the switch doesn't, there's not forty kids touching it.
Right.
So, you know, so on some of that infrastructure gear, I don't know if there's a way to smooth that out to, like, it's, it's, it's heavy in the, in the in-years and gets lighter as you go out. So to spread it a little better on the, on the heavier stuff might be a good thing to look at.
I think, I think you said on the, if I remember correctly from the workshop, the switches were, they had issues with, you know, going out of service essentially, so they weren't getting parts, or were off warranty, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
They had to front-load some of them.
You know, off warranty versus end of life, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know where they are.
Yeah.
Basic.
Yeah, we can talk on that.
Yeah. And the legacy projectors, that, that one thirty-seven-five, that's just the smart board replacement program.
It is.
And are they able to use their old smart notebooks on the new smart?
Yes.
Yeah, their screen's not too different than, than, you know, to touchscreen.
Well, I, I think it's important that you're able to migrate those, it's worth more than the hardware, probably, because you have a lot of curriculum embedded in those smart notebooks, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that was a huge.
Decision, right?
Decision that we had to make when we were piloting out the variety of devices that we would want to move to in the smart notebook. The smart board is the one that continued to rise to the top as far as our replacement, the interactive nature of it. It just is more user-friendly for teachers and for students. And then it's also that software that goes behind it, so, so much of the teachers have lessons and they have.
They got ten years' worth of lessons they've designed.
Buy more valuable hardware.
Yeah.
Penny?
So just generally speaking, I don't have any specific questions about this, but I love the idea of having this five-year look ahead. And I was just wondering, is five years the right amount of time? Should we be looking a little bit longer than five years? Or there's some, like, I, I just don't know what the lifespan is of some of these items. And if you're looking at buildings, you're, and you're doing a look ahead, you're always looking longer term because the lifespan of, of a lot of the components of buildings is a lot longer. Just wondered, this seemed like a really good starting point, I was wondering if five years is, just a question, it can be answered at a future date, if we should look a little bit longer as well.
I think we do the best to exhaust all the equipment that we have within the district before we take it offline. So if at any time we can get more life out of it, then that's what we would do, we would go another year. We do that certainly even with our labs at the high school, and then we refurbish that equipment over to SACS because we know that some of the equipment that we have here at the high school's incredibly high-tech and they may not need the same amount of hardware. And so we'll move some of those Mac computers because we can get a long period of time out of the Mac computers. So we'll take them out of an art lab here at the high school, and then we'll refurbish them over to SACS and we'll use them in their music tech lab or the art lab over at SACS. So they still have a good life cycle to them, and they still serve a purpose over at SACS, but we don't need it for the high-tech photography classes or the Photoshop or even some of our CTE classes that really need state-of-the-art kinds of devices here are really good purposes for us to be using still over at SACS. So we do our best to get the best life out of all of the devices. And at any one time, if we know that we can still get another year out of the iPads, we wouldn't put the request in.
Right, okay, that's great.
And, you know, I just would add, because it's easy to sort of overlook because we've been doing it for a while, but our Bring Your Own Device program here at the high school really saves us a significant amount of money as a district, right? So we've got the one-to-one devices things in K eight, but here at the high school, where the use is most sophisticated, students are bringing their own devices in each day. So we still have the labs and have to do other, kind of refreshes on those specialized areas, but we don't purchase one-to-one devices for high school students. So that's, it's an efficiency we started years ago, it works very well, and students like having their own devices, but it's, so it's, it's a win-win, but it is certainly a, an efficiency for us when we're talking about budget. This number would be different if we did it otherwise.
Okay. Brendan?
I would just say, I'm, you know, I'm generally supportive of the budget. I think it, you know, strikes the right balance. I think we're spending money where it's most impactful. I think we're making, you know, changes incrementally that will improve our schools and outcomes for kids, hopefully. And I think, once again, you know, what we've seen, I don't know, it's been at least five, six years, maybe, maybe longer for me. You know, every year we're chipping away in areas that are less impactful to kids around, you know, equipment and contracted services and, and all those things to bring down those costs, you know, which mitigate the overall budget increase and keeps our per people spending lower, which is why we keep making progress on that front. So I'm, I'm overall really supportive of the budget, and I think it's a, a good one to move forward.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? So I have a couple of things. One, I think, and we talked a lot about the kind of budget process over the past year. I thought that, I thought that Wednesday's workshop was productive, so I, I liked the addition of that into the meeting. I think it gave a good forum for everyone to really jump in after having the budget for a while and actually getting, kind of, the, having the Q and A already answered for it. So I would, I think if we as a board wanted to discuss the budget process and timing and other things, which I'm, I'm open to, I would just say that I thought that that was a, a, a good addition to facilitate getting through the materials. And then on the classroom coach, I would just like to, maybe at some time, assuming, assuming we get through it, get like some real feedback on what's working, what's not, what the teachers think of it, like, what do they like about it? Where is there overlap with maybe the Tepel process where there's, where they feel like it's addressing something unique? And just to understand, because I know, I think they mentioned in the workshop, the principals might have originally thought to come for three, and we said one and test it out. But I just think something back to the board that delves into that level of effectiveness and impact, I think, would be, would be helpful.
Definitely.
Brendan?
I just have one other thing, when you mentioned process, you know, I think it was September or October that we invited, you know, Board of Finance, Town Council, Board of Selectmen to talk about the Internal Services Fund and just address that issue off-cycle. And I think it was a good conversation, but really not a lot has come from it. So now that we are in the budget cycle, I just, I just want to, you know, remind all of us that, you know, having our budget, budget fully funded, including the ISF, is really.
that, you know, having our budget, budget fully funded, including the ISF, is really important as we, you know, look to start the next fiscal year, you know, and school year. And my, you know, hope slash expectation is we're not, you know, battling with the Board of Finance again over internal services. There are obviously, those conversations can be had, but, you know, they really need to be had off-cycle so that we can move forward with the budget. So hopefully we're all on the same page on that front.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add to that, and I agree, is I actually thought some of the materials that the team and Joe provided during that meeting were helpful. So to the extent that any of those either could be updated or have more current projections, I just think having some of that backup prepared for kind of discussion, if and when we get into it, I think would be, would be helpful. Because I think that the more years we can look at over time and kind of especially take out some of the noise of maybe how it was funded and actually look at actual claims and things like that, I think it will hopefully, at least informationally, be helpful for that discussion.
Well, and in a revision of the Board of Finance process, they've carved out about 15 minutes of time specifically to discuss the ISF in the, in our presentation to them. So we will have those exhibits and see if Joe's available to kind of talk them through a little bit. And if Joe is, he'll need more than 15 minutes, but it is carved out.
I have a feeling we'll be talking about it longer anyways.
Penny?
So I also support this budget. I think you have to strategically improve every single year. I mean, it's amazing if you compare like every five years, but how much the district has moved in advance. And I think that this budget does that for us, and it's going to benefit our students to meet, allow them to meet the changing needs at the times in the future. One thing I did want to make sure, I didn't see anything in this budget doing, figuring out the effects of our sleep time change, you know, which we've gotten anecdotal evidence on this year. I know we're planning to do some more deeper analysis into that later in the year. And I just want to make sure if there's any follow-up items that, you know, we want from that. I'm thinking we can find the money in this budget or, you know, that's there. But I just wanted to raise that as something that we still, I think as a board, we want to make certain that that change we made is the best one possible.
Yeah, and the biggest drivers in something like that would be staffing. And we're confident with the staffing where we are now.
Right. I was thinking more surveys and things like that, which are smaller.
Yep. So we have a partner that we're just starting to work with, who's going to help us with that. And it's, you know, funding through this year and what have you. So we're in good shape.
Great.
So I guess, are there any other questions? Or are people prepared to vote on the motion? Okay. So Penny had made a motion and Brendan had seconded to adopt a second reading. So I'd asked, can I get a motion to approve?
You don't need a motion, just a vote.
Just a vote, okay.
Vote on the motion.
Vote on the motion. All in favor?
Want to read it, just, just for the sake of, yeah, what the motion was?
Sure. The motion was to approve the Superintendent's 2324 budget proposal. That's it, yeah. All those in favor? Right, it's unanimous. Thank you. And I know a ton of, I know a ton of work has gone into this and will continue to go into it. So I appreciate all the team's energy and effort in answering a lot of questions from, from this group. So thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, the Board of Education now has a budget proposal. Thank you. Thank you.
So I think next we have three committee charters to do a second read on.
Yes, and a second readings, again, the motion's already on the floor. So the first is our communications charter.
So can I get, I guess, does anyone have any questions or comments on any, on the communications charter? Okay. So can I get a vote to accept the BOE Communications Standing Committee Charter? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have the Resources Standing Committee Charter. Does anyone have any comments or questions on it? Okay, can I get, can we vote on the motion to approve the BOE Resources Standing Committee Charter? All those in favor? Unanimous? And last is the Governance Standing Committee Charter. Does anyone have any comments or questions on it? Okay. Can we, can I get a vote on the motion to approve the BOE Governance Standing Committee? All those in favor? Unanimous? Great.
So we will be building into the schedule two or three or so opportunities for the chair of each committee to report out on their progress to the board, as is in the charters. And as you know, as a standing committees now, it's a three-year tenure for the committee. So, great. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we can move to comments from the public. Would anyone like to make a public comment?
All right. Senator Speaker Waterling, Ninth Grade Social Study Section Two. So hopefully I can make this time. So for the teachers in the classroom, all our teachers are trained for the multitask. But without a proper student placement, with the widespread of knowledge and skill level, interest and intention accepted, teachers can do in the classroom just limit. I'm sure everyone agrees with Dr. Kranti that being a teacher is not easy nowadays. So can teacher, can the school and the department please help our teachers to provide more structured instruction to those students willing to challenge and advance themselves on a social study in ninth grade, not later? Thank you. Next, classmates. We all know classmates are vital parts of the classroom experience. Sure, it's great to have our students to have fun, to feel great, to interact and work with students with different backgrounds. But for some students, if not all, social study after all is for study, not for social. So when they go to the social study classroom, they make friends. They share a lot of common things outside of the textbook. But sometimes it's just hard to relate to the rest of class academically. It's hard to have the stimulation, brainstorm, you know, peer pressure in a good way in a classroom to make the most and best of their experience in the classroom, I mean, most experience in a classroom time. And I'm just curious, do we have any recent research on this kind of practice to support, you know, mix all kinds of the background, different level of interest, intention, skill level, knowledge level, to boost the entire performance? I'd be more than interested to learn that. And also, I could be wrong, I'm not sure. If this is a kind of like a classroom experiment of the DEI, you know, diversity and inclusion of different backgrounds, different academic level, skill level, interest intention on a subject. If so, then where, how can we make sure each, every school, every single student in the classroom get the equal opportunity to get the attention and the help they need to excel their experience? I'm done. So I urge the teacher, the school and the department to reach out more, the teachers in the classroom and the students for the firsthand experience and the feedback. And I'm sure with the proper arrangement, we're going to make a better performance result and a better job. Thank you for your listening. Thanks for your time. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Onto announcements and future business.
Sure thing. So a couple of announcements first. The, we've exceeded 1,600 downloads of the NCPS app so far, which isn't bad, given that we've only been marketing about a week and a half or so. But we have 4,100 students and parents to boot. So we want to get 10 times that number as quickly as we can. So we're going to keep marketing that. But we're happy for the start at over, over 1,600 downloads so far. Another quick thing, we got some feedback today from Michelle Santilli in our kitchens, where we had a few inspections today. And the, of the three buildings that were inspected, two of them are, were at 100, so the perfect score. And one was a 99 because of one temp and one fridge was just off by a little, and they had to fix that. But congratulations to Michelle and her team for doing a great, great job over there in our kitchens and following the rules, keeping them clean and getting a perfect score. That's not so bad. Future business, we will have an update our next meeting from the Literacy Academy. We'll of course continue talking about our budget. And a few years ago, Connecticut changed the rules around your establishing a graduation date for your high school. So in conversation with Mr. Egan here and his team, next meeting, we may bring forward a date to propose for our graduation date for the high school. And the way, it used to be that you had to wait till April to set that date. Now they allow you to set it earlier as long as you don't set, you set it on or after the 180th day of school. So we'll go ahead and figure that out and get that date set that works best for the high school. And then if we have snow days that happen or cancellations that happen, you don't have to move it as long as it was initially established at or past that 180th day. So we'll do that at our next meeting. And get that word out there instead of having our mailboxes flooded with people asking the question. Right. So we'll get that graduation date out there. There we go. And, well, one more, I guess, on Thursday morning. So at 8:30, I'll be bringing the budget to the Board of Selectmen, where we'll have a review of the operating for sure, and then really dive deeply into capital. As you know, the Board of Selectmen is very involved with our capital, capital spending plans. So we'll spend quite a bit of time. And Dan, I hope you'll join me there. I know Sean will for sure. So that's our next phase of the budget. And then after that, about a week later, we go to the Board of Finance. Great. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Brendan, second. Penny, in favor? All right, thank you.